So we are now to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag, the United States of America, to the principle, to the stance, to the mission, under God, invincible, liberty is just as strong.
Okay, and now, and now we are on to special presentations, where we are going to have a one-hour question-answer period with the Denville School Administrative Team, who have joined us virtually in addition to the administrators here. And we have questions, some people are here in the audience tonight, in person, we have people attending virtually, and we have questions that have been nailed in.
Thank you. We do have our administrative team online, and each member of the administrative team will go through, from their department or school, some information about the reopening plan, and then there will be some time for a briefing again. I'll just go through a few things with the district's guidebook, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Stansfield. There were several questions related to when will people know or schedule that will be coming out next coming week this week. There were several questions about drop-off and pickup. There will be some answers to that from our administrative team coming up. Most of the questions that you asked, we have the answer already, but obviously I understand there's so much information out there on our website. So we did, we are going to post this, and email this out, this document that signs the question and the answer. We did remove the people's names, just make it a little bit more, you know, we do want to keep it named after them. We, so another question that we heard a bunch of times is what is going to happen with the virtual? So right now, in K-5, we have a virtual school. Children be assigned to us through class, or be a teacher for the class. There is no maximum size of the class, so there's nothing like that. So we're working on it to make this class size as balanced as possible, but as well as not driving up the class sizes of the children that are in the school. What are we doing to make sure that there's appropriate technology? We've been working on that constantly since, actually well before the COVID started. We're lucky because we worked hard on our, on our infrastructure, making sure we have the pad, and the devices, and the network capable to handle technology needs that are coming up from this. So it's not like we have to do it now. We did also purchase some more equipment, and while there's more devices, we have enough devices for every student and staff member in the district. As of this time, there, we have enough staff members to open the building. We are working with some individuals, but at this particular time, we do have enough staff members to open our buildings. So when will we revisit these? So our plan, obviously, is going to be in flux. It'll have to be in flux because the, I don't think that anything's really for certain going forward. One of the things I'd like to say is that it's our first pandemic we're dealing with. We're not sure if every single one answered every single question. We'll have to be flexible, and adjust as needed, and as well, just like we do with any other parts of our program. I mean, evaluate as needed, and make changes as needed too. Some other decisions. So one of the, another question was like, when would, when would we decide to close schools? If there were cases, that would be determined by the Department of Health and Department of Education. We work closely with them on that to see whether or not there's too many cases, and we have to close. That was a question that came up a few times. For a lot of the questions, just as a general statement, some of the specific things would be better to work directly with your school. Just because each school does have some differences. So if it's a specific question about your child and your school, that's not being answered, it would be great for you to contact the school directly. And also I'd like to make, I'd also like to note that when one school is running or joining, again, it's our first pandemic. You would really expect that the public, we understand that, work directly with teachers, we've got issues with their program, with the child's program. Obviously, all of us are learning as we go. We've never been through anything like this. And we're going to have to work, we're going to have to work together as a community to provide the best possible program for all of our students. Another question would be, what, this has been a general question too, what happens if there's a, somebody has symptoms in school? All of that needs to be reported to the Health, to the Health Department, and the Health Department guides us as we go. Right now, we're in what's called a low, we have, we are in the green area. Our Northwestern New Jersey is listed as green on the New Jersey COVID site. So for right now, that's the way it is. If that happens to change, it will be informed by the, by the Department of Health. And I think the best thing for now is, I went through several of the ones that have to do with the district, and right now, I'd like to turn it over to some of our principals to talk individually. So if we could start off with the Valley View principal, Mr. Corman, to ask, to just give a little presentation on what their opening situation is, and go through all of them, and at the end we'll end up to, to an A for all principals in town.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Forte. So I'm just going to go through a couple of things. The first is that our class sizes at Valley View will range between 13 and 14 as an average. Our drop-off will be similar to what it's been in the past. I work with Sergeant Jackson, and just the Transportation Department, myself. Sergeant Jackson, we decided that it, for the safety of the students and everybody else, the staff, we're going to continue having parents drop the students off at the park. We're asking that the parents pull all the way forward, and then the students will walk over to the public safety officer who will cross them. The only difference is the students that get dropped off will enter through our lower B entrance. We'll have staff out there, we'll have somebody by the door to make sure the students are aware to go, and then, yeah.
We, I'm sorry, we had some technical difficulties here. Could you start over?
Oh, sure. My pleasure, Ms. Castanza. All right. So I'll start again. So I just mentioned that our class sizes, the average of our class size will be 13 or 14. With that, our drop-off, we met with Sergeant Jackson, the Transportation Department, and we've decided that for the safety of the students and the staff, the best interest is to still have parents drop their students off at the park across the street. At that point, the students will walk on the sidewalk to the public safety officer who will cross them. And then those students will walk along the side of the building and enter through a lower B entrance. We normally never use that entrance for, to allow students to come in, but we're going to do it to help with distancing. And then the students from the bus will still enter through the main entrance. In terms of, you know, social distancing and dismissal, we will also use those exits to dismiss the students at the end of the day. And then dismissal from class will be staggered based off of grade level. In the hallways currently, the custodial staff has worked really hard to help and assist in putting down tape, arrows, signage, so that we can remind the students to stay to the right, and also to keep distance when possible. We also will use our up-and-down stairwell like we have in the past couple of years to make sure that the students, again, keep as much distance as possible. As far as cleaning the classrooms, or the desks at least, in between classes, we're going to ask for the students' assistance with this. In a typical year, students help and clean the cafeteria tables, so we figure they can help us with this. We'll, we'll provide wipes for them as they enter the class, and then we'll just ask them to wipe down their desks. The sneeze guards that will be provided to the students will be disinfected at the end of the day by our custodial staff, and then the students will be able to pick one up in the morning. Another question that was asked was about bags, because we're not using our hall lockers this year, so students will be allowed to carry around a backpack or a string bag to assist them, because they will have to carry the sneeze guard as well. I know Dr. Forte mentioned, but our schedules will be released on Wednesday at 3 o'clock. That information came out in two welcoming letters I sent last week. Please understand that the scheduling process has been very difficult this year. It usually takes us about three months to create student schedules. And then in the past week, we've had to revise all of the schedules, or a good portion of them because of the students who chose to go virtually. So once the schedules come out, there will be no schedule changes at this time. As far as expectations for those students that are 100% virtual, we expect those students to be on their device at 7:30 and follow their schedule. Since all of the students will be virtual from 12:30 until 25, we also expect those students to log onto their device and be interactive learners throughout the course of the virtual learning, since that is still part of the school day. As far as bathrooms in the building, we will only open a couple of bathrooms at a time, and then close those and open the others so the custodial staff can disinfect them. So we have four student bathrooms. So at this point, right now, the idea would be to open up two for a period of time, close those two, open the other two, and then have the custodial staff disinfect them, and continue to do that throughout the course of the day. We know that we're going through a lot of challenges at this time, but we will work together to continue to do that, to make this the most successful year that we can. But if you have any other questions, you can contact me directly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. We have, this is Basely for Edora, Mr. Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. I just want to start out and give you a little bit of information. Right now, in-person Lakeview has 430 students that will join us every morning, and we have 196 students, and we'll be virtual. We have nice class sizes in our in-person. They run from 11 students to 15. We're very pleased with the numbers, and it does allow us to separate the desks and tables as much as we possibly can. So we're very pleased with those numbers. In terms of our schedule, we are going to be starting our day 10 minutes later than we normally do. So from 7:55 to 8:10 is arrival into our school. So it depends whether or not your child is taking the bus, or if you are driving your student. When they arrive to school, they will go to their homeroom directly. They will not go to the big areas they normally go to. They will go to their homeroom. Their homeroom teacher will check and make sure that that screening that you need to fill out on a daily basis has been completed. If it has been completed, the child will enter the classroom. They will take their belongings, put them away, they will wash their hands, and the teacher will either have some tabletop activities or things for them to do in waiting for the rest of the children to come. If for some reason the screening form has not been completed, they will go to the nurse's office, the nurse will call you, and then we'll get the form completed, and then they will join their friends in the classroom. At 8:10 to 8:30, they will have their morning meeting and their socialization. And then from 8:30 to 12:10, they'll have literacy, math instruction. Also at that time, we will allow for movement breaks, and the building for them to get outside. We have tables and tents set outside. So we're hoping for them to get outside and have a lot of instructions, their snacks, and those kinds of things outside.
Thank you. Just, just to have a pause for a minute?
Yes.
Pause the meeting for a few minutes while we...
Mrs. Basely, you can, you can continue to speak.
It's okay?
Yep.
Okay. In the afternoon, after they go home, they will have a rotating schedule of science, social studies, specials, and small group work. This is exactly the same also for virtual schedule. The same expectations whether you're an in-person student or a virtual student. The expectations are the same. But let me clarify. I know kindergarten parents, you're worried about them being in front of a screen all day long. We understand their needs, and we're going to meet their needs. So we're not, the expectation is not for them in front of a screen all day long. So we're working on a schedule in order to meet the, the little ones' needs as well. In terms of arrival and dismissal, we have set up a two-tier system. So K-1 and 2, if you are driving your child, you will come onto campus, and you will drop off by the flagpole. Today, on the website, we put a drop-off and pickup plan that you can take a look at. If your child's 3, 4, 5, they'll drop off and be run. Are we okay?
Okay.
Okay. Kindergarten orientation, some parents were worried about kindergarten orientation. Letter went out on Friday, mailing kindergarten orientation. It is on August 31st, so it will go off on that day. And we will also have on September 3rd an opportunity for parents to come and pick up materials for all virtual students, so they will have the materials that they need to be successful in their virtual classroom. We will also have an opportunity for you to meet with the virtual teacher. It will be like a drive-by, but at least they can put a name to a face. In terms of cleaning, we have a lot of bathrooms at Lakeview School. We have over 30 bathrooms, because we have preschool and kindergarten. So we are setting up a schedule, and there'll be a clipboard outside of all bathrooms, so that we note exactly when the bathrooms have been cleaned through the day. At the end of the day, all of the rooms will be cleaned and disinfected before the next school day. Limiting use of the hallways, so we're not too worried about the hallways. Our goal is to keep the children in their cohort. Well, the only time you'll see them in the hallways is if they are heading outside, and they will go outside by the closest door. So we really won't have crowded hallways, because we're limiting the use of the hallways.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't, oh, not touching.
I think that's all I have, unless someone has a question?
We will get to the questions at the end after we go through the administrator. Thank you, Mrs. Basely, that we hear from Mrs. Vera Opelis. How are you?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. A lot of my information is going to be the same as what Mrs. Basely said, because we are working together in our both elementary schedules. I will reiterate what everyone has said, that these are not ideal times, and it's our first time dealing with everything, but especially with this pandemic. But we know what students require, and we are taking their social, emotional, and mental health, and their academics all into consideration as we do our planning. Our students, about 32% have opted for virtual, and 67% is coming live. The live classrooms, again, we are also very happy with our sizes. We have 12 to 14 students per class. We do have dedicated teachers for the virtual classrooms that will be there instructing the students virtually all day. We really reflected on what worked in March with virtual learning, and what we can do to really increase the engagement, interactivity, and connection, and connectivity with the students and their peers. So we're excited about bringing some of that into that virtual classroom. For our day, if you are coming to school live, your day does start later. Our just, our arrival time has also been pushed. So usually, we had the drop-off start at 8:20. Now it is 8:30. The drop-off, just like in the maps on the website, are through Gardner Fields in the basketball area. That back area is for morning drop-off and afternoon drop-off. The students in K-3 enter through the stairwell entrance, and 1 and 2 will enter through the APR. We're excited to have our second building, because that has enabled us to have even more social distancing. So if you have a child also going to the annex, you would leave the municipal park building and that parking lot. Make a left, go around Myers, go to the front of the school, drop your child off, and then back to Myers with a quick loop. So that's where our 4th and 5th graders will be dropped off, and that's yet another location. The buses will be dropping off at the north lot and at the side lot in the front of the building for the annex. The day starts around 8:35, where students will do a morning meeting, character, and mental health and social learning period. Then the majority of the time is literacy and math. Literacy is readers and writers workshop, word work, and math. So that would be what they are doing live in the classroom. Afterwards, they go home, they have lunch, take a little break, and we start up again at 1:27. We realize that the afternoon virtual, you know, there is some exhaustion setting up, so the afternoons will start kind of gentle with the students and take into consideration their age and where they are developmentally. So at that period, it could be a science class, specials, and small group instruction as needed with the teacher. For those attending virtually, just like Mrs. Basely said, the expectations are the same. What we suggest for parents is try to make your routine as usual as if you went to live school. Child wakes up, gets ready, goes to their learning area. You have a nice quiet space, perhaps even put it in an office, you know, little cardboard area for them to know that that's their workspace that is quiet, and they're expected to have their computer on and be engaged and attentive to virtual learning. Already, our virtual teachers have been meeting to think of activities to increase the interactivity and to really help students feel connected to the school and to each other. And like Mrs. Basely said, September 3rd, we will have a drive-up where you could do a quick wave, get your materials, and we will schedule things like that throughout the year to help the students make a connection with their virtual teachers. Their schedule masks the same as the live schedule, so their afternoon looks the same as well. As far as what we have done to make the decisions of where the pickup and drop-off, we worked very closely with the police to find the safest route. So we know that previously, people used the entrance for St. Mary's to go to the front of the building at the annex. That would no longer be available. With the buses and everything going, we can't have cars picking up that. So we ask for your patience and your cooperation, as it takes a little while to get the pickup and drop-off all squared away. As far as cleaning the building, we have the same procedures as Mrs. Basely said, where we are monitoring, and the custodians have a check-off in which they clean the areas throughout the day. We did put hand sanitizers in the entrances and exits and throughout the buildings. And we know that the students will have an individual. I know they're called sneeze guard, but we're going to find a better word for that, so we don't get the kids to try to sneeze on them. Instead, we're going to call it their learning office, where they can decorate and use also to put anchor charts and information that they could refer to, and make it individualized, so they will have that. They will be required to wear the masks all day and on the bus. They will have mask breaks, where we can go outside to have their snacks and movement breaks as well. We do implore all parents to please help us with the morning screening, because you do need to fill out every morning, each and every for every child, the screening form as it relates to COVID, in order for the students to be allowed admittance into the school. We do not have visitors coming in. Everything will be virtual. If you need to pick up a child or anything like that, it would be where you are stationed at the best of y'all. All our efforts is safety, and that's our number-one priority. We know there is no ideal situation, but we are looking forward to the beginning of the year. We're excited about things that we put into place, and we're going to try to make the most positive year possible. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mrs. Castanza, do we need to pause while you straighten out? We're going to pause for a minute while we work out some technical difficulties. Just give it a minute. We have 156 people on the call right now.
Can we, we talk now, will they care? Thank you for, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Right now, we have about 100 people on. It seems like we're having some difficulty getting more people onto the call, so thank you for your patience. There are a few people here in the room with us. Once we open the question-and-answer period, we'll take questions from in-room first, and then the virtual questions. Can you post that line in?
So I think we have a solution. Mrs. Castanza was talking too. There are four or five people that are having difficulty getting up. And what she will do is send them another link to a virtual meetings, and then she can be, um, sort of, together with this one. So we'll start our meeting up again, and I'd like to start off with Mr. D'Angelo, our supervisor of transportation. He'll speak a little bit about the buses and what's expected when students return on September 8th.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Good evening. Just so everyone's aware, that we currently have 24 buses, and I'm proud to say that all of our drivers are returning and very anxious to be part of the team. As the students are riding the bus, the windows and roof hatches will be the windows and roof hatches will be open, whether permitting. This starts to change. We'll reduce the opening of the windows, but let the air still circulate. We'll have the front fan running to assist with the airflow. Masks will be required by all students to be worn on the bus. When loading the bus, the students will load from the rear to the front. And when departing, they'll depart from the front to the rear. We do suggest that siblings do sit together. And as far as kindergarten and first graders, we will sign them to the front of the bus. We would expect social distancing to occur at the bus stops. It will be difficult for us to do that, but it's important that the parents and still in this child, that that's important as well. And bus drivers will be wearing masks and face shields. Currently, the buses are right now operating at below fifty percent capacity. And that's overall. It's not a total, it's by bus. I have not one bus right now currently with the information that I've had from the survey that puts me over that fifty percent mark. It still does not allow us to do a complete social distancing, but we will try our best to make sure that everybody is safe as they're riding the school bus. The buses will arrive at the schools, and they will be unloaded in groups. We told drivers to keep their distance as well. We are not going to embark with all bus drivers at the same time. We're going to route the routes so they get there at different times, but yet enough time to be at the school when they need to be. I think that's all I have. Look forward to any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Thank you, D'Angelo.
Thank you.
We've gone through our principals, our director of busing. Now, I would like to move over to Mrs. Grace Johnson, our director of special services, to just speak a little bit about what's expected when students arrive.
Okay, thank you. Well, the students who receive special services will benefit from all the things that the principals just talked about in terms of health and safety protocols and all of those features that were discussed previously. What I would just want to bring to your attention is a few other items from the special ed department. One would be the special education programs. We have really talented and wonderful teachers in special services, and we'll continue to provide those special placements such as our resource center programs and our special class programs. Because of the nature of those classes, many of them will remain more of a hybrid model as opposed to separate classes with virtual classes and special classes in person. There may be some classes where we were able to provide two separate, and we felt that was appropriate for the students. However, there may be other places where you have simultaneously students receiving instruction virtually and in person in the same class. So that's something that's a little bit different. For related services, we're going to be providing them either in person or virtually. So that would be our speech therapy, our occupational therapy, physical therapy. All of those services we'll continue to provide. And it will either be in person during the day when the students are in school, or we'll also have the opportunity to provide it virtually. And we're looking at additional resources for those students who do continue to receive it virtually, whether they've elected the virtual program fully or if that's when it would best be appropriate for them to receive those services during their academic day. We also will continue to work with St. Clair's for mental health services for students. It's exciting that it's our third year working with the hospital and their behavioral department, and they will be providing us with mental health clinicians in all three schools. Those services, again, will also be available either in person or virtually. We'll continue to work with a behaviorist who will be available. And we have our case managers. So through this whole process with the many changes and everything that we've been dealing with with this pandemic, you still have your case manager always there to support you. We also brought them in even in August this year. Every case manager came in and worked a few days to make sure we're best preparing families and the kids and working with the schools to help them transition into their program, whichever it's going to be, whether in person or virtually. So that was something differently we did this year to help prepare, and they'll continue to be with the families and with the school staff throughout the year to support this process. Overall, it's just our goal is definitely help and safety first, and then also providing the appropriate services for our kids the best that we can. Those are our two goals, and we're looking forward to opening. Thank you.
Okay, we've gone through our departments. Now I'll turn it over to our board president, who will decide on how we lay down questions next.
So we're going to take questions from those in the room first. And for those who are virtual or who sent in questions, I just wanted to explain that we required your name and address for the procedure that people would follow here as well. So there's three people in the audience here in person. So if you could... So if you could just approach the link, introduce yourself and state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and post your question. Mrs. Costanza, would it work out if the people... If those community members who have joined virtually would type in their questions now? And would that mean you want them one at a time or can they just start sending in their questions? I think that typing, because there's so many people who think that typing the questions might be an easier way to manage it. So if you are joining virtually, please feel free to type in your questions now, and we will start to address those questions after people here in the room.
Okay, so Jessica Schumacher from twenty-four St. Mary's. I might have three questions. Is there a minimum requirement for live teaching? So whether that be for virtual and then also for the afternoons? I know, I'm just curious, is the minimum live teaching as opposed to recorded sessions that we had earlier in the spring?
So K five will have a virtual teacher for all students. There'll be a virtual teacher. Six through eight will not be virtual, it's live.
So for the younger grades, so K five, they will have live teaching? So whenever there's virtual, there's a live teacher that'll be online with them? Or do we have the option to do the pre-recorded videos?
If there was something they want to show, a video that they wanted to show them along the way, they certainly could do that. But the majority of the teaching would be live.
Okay. I just asked because it wasn't my experience during the spring. I know that things have changed. I just wanted to make sure that there is live teaching as opposed to like a teacher just putting up a pre-recorded video she did previously. That's all. So thank you. And then, was the curriculum adjusted? So for the kids that maybe didn't learn what they needed to at the end of last year, has the curriculum been updated for this year? So my daughter will be in second grade. I think that she maybe struggled on not having live teaching. Is there room for that?
So what you find on the website is the adopted curriculum. That has not been updated or changed, and it won't be. But what has been changed is the material will be covered in the grade. So all of the students, let's talk about that. They're all taking a readiness test at the beginning of the year, which is really the previous year's assessment, the end-of-year assessment. So we can determine where to start them. And then we'll be able to start them. And we were closing all summer with our math coach, and she's been, you know, trying to figure out what order to go in and what will have to be changed a bit or in this school year.
And then, this is something a little not related to COVID, but I heard recently that the health curriculum has been updated to include anal sex. Is this correct in the state of New Jersey and for what grade?
That I'm not aware of and is not in our curriculum. I mean, there's no line, sounds like anything like that.
Okay.
They don't start any of those topics in our course at all until seventh and eighth grade, and I have not seen that.
Okay, I've heard a couple of sources. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that what's going to be taught that I was prepared for.
You're always welcome to review the family life curriculum. So you can look at that, and, you know, if you want to email me, I can send you if you can't find it on the website. You can review any materials that we use, the texts, videos, et cetera. Parents can come and view as well.
Thank you. I'm just very pleased to have the students by days as opposed to the AB cohort. So I'm just really appreciative that you guys did what you've done to have that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that Jess makes two, asks two questions that a lot of parents have asked. And the points the administration made is that the virtual curriculum or the virtual procedures will be very different from in the spring. And that... I forgot my second point, so please, with your question.
Hi, Robert Boyle, Wanty Chris Lane, Denville. Mark Whitehead, yes, but. I have, it's all related to kind of environmental factors. One is, I know that one thing that Dr. Forte mentioned in one of the FAQs was replacing some of the filters and putting in Merv seventeen filters. My, what I'm wondering is, what is the percentage of makeup air that's fresh air that's going into the classrooms versus the same air being circulated? Do we have any technical specifications on that? If that's something you guys are going to publish? Because it's really an airborne disease. So anything else you do, washing down desks, a mask, whatever, none of that stuff really matters as long as you're not putting fresh air in there, as long as everyone's reading the same air. Nothing else really matters.
I can defer that to Zerowski, but it's a very technical question. I'm sure if you have that, if I would can work on it with consultants.
The only other thing before you answer, Mr. Raskin, is you mentioned Merv seventeen, and we're working with our... Yeah, so just so that there's a clarification and we're all on the same page. It's Merv thirteen that are being installed in our A-CAP systems.
Okay, CDC recommends a minimum of Merv seventeen?
Actually, they don't. But I'm going to have Mrs. Raskin answer your question, and then...
In reference to the percentage, I will have to defer it to the professional engineers. I don't know how that's really going to work. Do some research. And in reference to HVAC filters, we are using according to these HVAC specifications. If some of the HVAC, we have to support those Merv seventeen. Merv seventeens are, we're kind of nation probably from the NAD, NJAT. However, according to the DOE, the guidelines are different. We have to use according to the HVAC support. I remember we were using Merv thirteen. We had to use that number specifications.
Okay, because the seventeen I was getting was from Ashray and from CDC. So if local school will be publishing them, what percentage of makeup air is?
When I do get that information, absolutely, I'll give Dr. Forte the information. We'll make it count.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So we can add that information to our FAQ.
We're going to have to pause again, I'm sorry. Mrs. Costanza, we're going to move all of our attendees, virtual attendees, over to Zoom because there's a problem we have right now with the chat feature and also with the waiting room. So, Mrs. Costanza, where are you going to get this information out to people? So we're going to ask everybody to move over. If you can stay on this, but we won't be able to see your chat. If you prefer staying on this, you're going to leave this one running, right? If you prefer staying on this just to hear it, okay? But if you would like to actually ask a question, you're going to have to move over to Zoom, which Mrs. Costanza will leave, will post on the homepage of the district website, which is www.denville.org. It'll be posted there in a minute. And then we'll resume on Zoom.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to just say to you is that we are following and are required to follow the Rovak policies and guidelines. So that's what I was referring to as far as the resource for what the schools are required to utilize for opening and not opening buildings and the safety and health procedures.
And what was that you were following, sir?
The Rovak guidelines.
Oh, Rovak, okay.
So that specific filter is not in those guidelines.
We kind of said, though, that the filters that are in our buildings are the ones recommended by the manufacturer. And in any case, we could move to a Merv thirteen. We did. As a matter of fact, we didn't yet. We will. They're coming tomorrow and the next day, vendor, to install a Merv thirteen to any unit, district line that can accept them. Now, many of our units cannot accept a Merv thirteen. So whatever the, and that's what the guidelines are saying about promotion and regarding HVAC is that you have the manufacturer recommended or specs out filters. So that's where we're at right now. But we will see if we can get that information from our vendor. And if we do, we'll put it out in a communication.
Are there any more questions from in-room?
I actually just looked up an article. Sorry, Jessica, again. I just looked up an article, and it said that this past year, the health curriculum was updated. And my previous question, it says that has, and so eighth grade they will be learning about anal sex. So I don't know if Denville updated that, but New Jersey health curriculum has. So you don't...
It's not quite like that. I mean, I know they update standards, but it's not quite as that specific.
All right, I guess I can email you separately about what I found, and then you could maybe provide more...
Sure, I can share resources, the texts, and holding out students, we see.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody for dealing with and having patience with our technical difficulties. Can we see the questions coming in in the chat now? The Zoom chat. There is one question. Will the virtual teacher be shared between the schools? Okay, so the question coming in online is, will the virtual teacher be shared between the schools?
For the elementary schools, yes, in second and fifth grade.
Mrs. Basely, could you repeat that, please?
Yes. So for the elementary schools, yes, we will share a virtual teacher in second and fifth grade.
So in second and fifth grade, Riverview and Lakeview will share a virtual teacher?
Correct.
So first, kindergarten, first, third, and fourth, there is a virtual teacher in Riverview, and there's a virtual teacher in Riverview. This is of course based on the numbers of students that are in the virtual program.
Mrs. Raskin, can I ask you a follow-up question then? Dr. Callis, I assume that that is all subject to change, right? In other words, if there's fluctuation for students going in or out with virtual, it may change, right? Either you may have to share, or if you had to add a section, they have to... Maybe change that, right?
Anything is open to change. Right now, with our numbers, that even if you went in or out, I think that our kindergarten teacher would still remain whatever they want. Lakeview, if it's a shared teacher, it would get it more. And we have to add. So yes, the numbers would take a change.
And I think that can be said for all the questions about student numbers in any room. The district is... The district is allowing parents and students to change their mind, um, change from an in-person to a virtual setting or vice versa. So, um, as long as those changes are allowable, understandably, there might be differences from the information that you might receive tonight.
So, is it gonna be easier if, if I could, do you want me to read the Zoom or? I'll get it. Sorry, not for you. Okay, so the questions that we currently have are for Riverview. What was before that? Well, Cindy, is it possible for you to either get us to read the mic or can you read it to us? Okay, so, um, we have Mary Stedman, Noel Woodport. I don't know if this has been discussed yet, but is Denville by the district whose plan has been approved by the state? Has Denville's plan been approved by the state?
So I'm just gonna repeat the question one more time. Has Denville's plan been approved by the state?
So, this is a kind of complicated question. The first thing is, the state and Department of Health have both been very, have been very clear that they're not actually approving anything, they're just reviewing it. So our plan was submitted to the state, and they answered it, were approved on August 11th, and we have not heard back as of yet. We don't expect her to be a problem. We didn't cover everything that was required, but they did send, today there was a notice that they sent some back to the state for, um, for review of some edits. One thing I can say is that the plan was vetted by the Department of Education and the Department of Health prior to submitting. So the entire plan, I can be, I have the entire plan with both, and given the go-ahead, cannot approve the go-ahead, but we are willing to hear back from the Department of Education.
This is my, if I could just follow up with that. Um, Dr. Forte, just to be clear, you said that the state had requested some edits. In our prior reading, you said the edits were from other districts, not from Denville, correct?
The, the thing that was in the newspaper today about the edits had nothing to do with us. We didn't hear one way or another from the state as of today. We're trying to check my emails a minute ago, we're having some technical difficulties and it still wasn't there. So we do not have anything back from the state as of tonight.
Thank you.
We have some people joining us in person. Welcome. Um, we had just opened the questions to the floor, so if either of you have questions, please feel free, just introduce yourselves, name and address, and offer your questions around. I'm sorry, would you mind just coming up to the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you. And you're also, we're recording the meeting, so then everybody at home will hear you as well.
Carrie Graywell, two D in Road, Denville, New Jersey. I just came down because I couldn't hear it on the Google Meet. I already said my.
Ah, okay. Well, thank you very much. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Somebody is working very hard on there.
I'm sorry, but actually, the chat is going to be pulled into Zoom, so if you have questions that you need to come in, we will need to be able to answer them.
Feel free to have a seat there. You don't have to be. Thank you.
No, I actually sent it in early this morning, so I don't need to.
So, the ones that were submitted via the forum were either answered here, either by me or one of the other administrators, but we will also put out the Q and A in written form so everybody can see what the questions and answers were, especially considering how all the technical difficulties, but we, you know, just give people our opportunity to see the answers.
Did I answer you? Did you wanna help ask the question? I couldn't understand what was going on. So our help is for your, for that.
Okay. Um, so just to reiterate, we will be putting out a written version of all the question and answers that are provided here tonight, as well as the ones that were written in, and our frequently asked questions will be updated as well. Um, if, I believe, this is to stand to say that if you submitted your questions in Google Meet, you need to retype them in the Zoom meeting. So if you haven't already, we did not receive the questions in the Google Meet, so if you sent a question there, please send your question again in the Zoom meet.
For Riverview, how are you controlling student-teacher mobility during the school day to avoid the issue of overcrowding of halls when classes are changing?
So as I mentioned before, we're going to stagger the dismissal from class by grade. So we will dismiss them at different times in the hallway. Um, we've put markings in the hallway to remind them. And then we'll also do that, we'll stagger the entrance into the building and the exit to the building at the end of the school day.
Thank you, Mr. Forman. As communicated by Dr. Forte on August 9th, 95% of all parents' guardians have already completed the survey regarding their student's attendance for the coming school year. Media's parents would like to know the outcome of this survey with all the data concerning the, I don't know. Overall in-person student attendance in all schools, the in-person student attendance per school, and the teacher-in-person attendance per school.
So the overall, the overall results were 70% in-person, 30% virtual. Do not have information broken down by school, but it's pretty close to 70% and 30%. If one of the principals wants to hop on, he may know. And we would not provide information about the staff, the question I was answering, the question I was asking regarding the staff.
Mrs. Basely gave those exact numbers as well, as did I, but again, to reiterate, for Riverview, it's 67, 32. Exact numbers are 137 fully virtual and 286 live. It's just 70, 30, or close to that in all three schools. So my, Lakeview is 69 and 31, 69 in-person, 31 virtual, 431 students in-person, virtually 196.
And at Valley View, it is very close to the 70, 30. It's just changed a little bit. We've gotten some new enrolled students the last couple of days, so we are extremely close to that 70, 30%.
So just for the audience at home, Mrs. Basely, Lakeview is 431 in-person, 196 virtual.
433 in-person, 196 virtual as of today. That can change tomorrow.
Certainly, as of today, 433 in-person, Lakeview 196. And I'm sorry, can we repeat Riverview's numbers as well?
Sure, and I should clarify, that's as of today at 3:00 PM when I wrote this down, so it could change, but we have 137 fully virtual and 286 live.
So for Riverview, it's 137 virtual and 286 live. And Valley View is close to that 70, 30 ratio as well. So we have more questions, Mr. Forman?
Uh, Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Okay, so the Valley View in-person is 389 students and, uh, the virtual is 161.
Thank you, so Valley.
Valley View is 389 in-person and 161 virtual. And as I mentioned, though, we did get, uh, within the last week or so, we've probably gotten six or seven new students who have registered that we have not, um, put them into the Genesis yet, so we don't know if they will be in-person or virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Forman. So 389 in-person, 161 virtual, and all of those numbers are as of today and subject to change.
Okay, you have another question? Will extra bike racks be available at Valley View for kids that want to ride their bikes?
Mr. Forman, would you mind taking that question?
Uh, it is definitely something we can discuss and look into. We do have the bike racks currently, um, not at the main entrance, it's the other double doors in the front of the building. Just in years past, we've never had more than one or two students ride a bike. So if this is something that we do see, we will definitely address it because anything that we've asked for, we have gotten. So I, I know that that will not be an issue whatsoever.
Another great concern is about the possibility, possibility to adhere to social distancing, especially at Valley View, where all the children have to switch classes three times a day with the current proposed schedule. Having that many students move all at the same time would make social distancing very difficult, if not even possible to adhere to. Even with the tape down the middle of the hallways, students will not be able to stay six feet apart moving between classes.
Mr. Forman, would you like to address any of that?
So again, we're, we are well aware that that is gonna be our biggest challenge. We need to work together. I'm gonna rely on staff to remind the students the importance of continuing to walk. The, the tape is not gonna fix the problem, it's just hope there to help the problem and help with the distancing. At the same time, we're asking for the parents of our students to remind their, their children to continue to wear their masks in the hallway, uh, to help with that. And again, the tape and the arrows are there more to have the students walk out, walk single file instead of in packs like they normally do in the middle school. Um, and we will continue to use the up and down stairwell as well to address this. We know it's not perfect, but we know the importance for the student to get back in the building, and the team and the committee thought this was the best way to go about it. So that's why we are working extremely hard to address this as best as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Forman. Uh, Mrs. Costanza, can you tell us that there, we did originally have, prior to our technical difficulties, representatives from the Department of Health joining our call virtually this evening. I'm not sure if they're with us now. They were able to get on the Meet via phone, I'm not sure if you see on that way, or if they, um, went onto the Zoom. They were also able to, um, to get on to the Meet, but had some, didn't want, personally wanted to share, but it was just very modest. So, um, I would just ask that if the Department of Health is here on either of these calls, if they could just unmute themselves or if they could turn off, if not, you know how to repeat, um, let me know and I will unmute. While we're waiting to see if they're here, I think it's important to realize that, um, right now, under current laws, we are required to open the buildings unless we cannot meet the health and safety guidelines that the state has put forth. So, um, and Dr. Forte, jump in at any point if I may speak, but right now, the guidelines state that we are to have students and staff wear masks at all times and to social distance as much as possible. So for the concern of students in the hallways, which is certainly a concern, and as Mr. Forman addressed, they're going to be doing their best to keep students far apart, if we were unable to do that, that is not an allowable reason to close the buildings. I hope that makes sense, but we have to apply for a reason to close the buildings. Otherwise, we are required by law to open them. We can meet all the safety guidelines, which at this point in time, we can. So districts that you see closing or going 100% virtual are requesting to close with the Department of Education, and they must specify the reason, requirement that they cannot meet. They must submit how they're going to rectify the situation with an intended date of reopening buildings.
We do have another question. Tom Cleaver, 15, Mr. Webb. If health and safety is priority, why are we not testing for COVID-19 before school opening? Why aren't we scanning temperature with a camera at school entry?
So the group act does not require or recommend testing. Neither does the CDC, so we are not going to be offering testing for COVID-19 for students. And why are we not scanning temperature? Another thing that is not recommended is a possibility, but it was not recommended. And at this time, we are not scanning temperature. We will do it on some individual basis, and there's technical reasons for doing it, but overall, every student will have to scan for temperature.
Mrs. Wagner, can I ask another follow-up question? Please. Dr. Forte, there was, there is kind of, the, the parents are gonna be requested on a daily basis to verify that the students do not have a temperature correct?
Yes, that is correct. There will be a form on the Genesis portal every morning, parents will have to go on and verify that children are not exhibiting any symptoms of COVID-19.
And I can just make a quick comment as a parent, that I know there is often a temptation prior to COVID to send your child to school if they have been fever-free for five minutes, maybe with some ibuprofen or other medication. We are in a much, much, much different state, and I ask personally, as somebody has three kids in the school, that other parents commit that will really go follow this guidelines. My employer has a daily screening. I get a text every morning, 7 o'clock in the morning. I take my temperature, I fill out the screening, do I have any symptoms, do I have any contact with anyone? I can tell you that that reminder in my head every morning is really important for me because it reminds me every single morning how important it is for me to answer those questions appropriately. I've had employees that have had symptoms and have been asked to not come to work. It's a strain on me as a, as a manager for them, it's a strain on us as a company, but that's okay. I'll take that strain any day over somebody bringing an illness to the school. So it's, I can tell you, kids are gonna be screened out from this and asked to stay home on a much more cautious level than we ever have in the past. So I ask that us as a community of parents, we all do it together and commit to it.
Just a quick announcement, we, we are going to go, we are gonna skip through people who already have some questions to get to people that have not. If there's time at the end, we will go back to those questions. We have, um, we have approximately another 20 minutes of Q and A. And, um, so Mrs. Costanza, would you go to the next one, please?
Yeah. Velma England, Hingman Admiral. Have the district considered the toxicity of the cleaning protocol? And is it possible to walk my second grade child to Riverview instead of driving?
The answer to the question, the first question about the cleaning protocols, we, we work closely with our vendor, and all of the cleaning protocols we use have to meet all those guidelines for children and for OSHA. So everything we purchase has to meet up with those standards. And yes, you may walk your child, your second grader to Riverview. So that's not a problem.
I'm just gonna add that if you walk them to Riverview, make sure you leave them off at the Gardner entrance where are others staff there?
Okay, we have another question from Gus Fisher, uh, L. Gus Fisher Trail. Question for Lakeview. Will materials, lessons for the virtual afternoon be provided ahead of time to allow parents and caregivers to prepare? This was something that we struggled with in the spring. For example, will students come home with a kit for STEM or art projects? Or will a list be, or will a list be provided with sufficient notice for parents to obtain them?
Yes, in terms of the academics, so for kindergarten, they, virtually, they will receive their supplies on August 31st. For first through fifth grade, they'll receive their supplies on September 3rd. So for say their math book, math manipulatives, anything that we think they need to get themselves started, we will prepare a, a bag for them and we'll give them a time to come by and pick those up. So first to fifth on September 3rd and kindergarten on August 31st.
And for the in-person students, for the virtual classes, we have to, they'll receive their materials while at school to bring them. And is that for Lakeview and Riverview, those dates?
Our date for kindergarten orientation is September 1st for the kindergartners to get their materials and September 3rd is the same date, a different time for the parents to drive up and get the materials. So September 1st and September 3rd.
Okay, we have, for Riverview, can someone clarify the drop-off start time? The letter states 8:30, the morning meeting starting at 8:35. If you have one child in Riverview and one in the annex, what is the likelihood of being able to drop both children off within that time period?
We put five minutes in, but there's more minutes into the schedule. It is 8:30. We drove through it and of course, it's a lot less time than that. It will take longer the first few days, so we've allowed for that and scheduled that time in. So yes, it shows on the schedule from 8:35, but really, instruction and some morning meetings and everything like that will start around 8:40. Once we tighten up and it moves faster, then we can hopefully get down. That time even smaller, but we'll adjust as needed.
What is the plan for contact tracing for anyone testing positive for COVID-19?
So now I'm going to ask you, did you get a Department of Health member to respond during the, okay?
We did receive an email from the Department of Health. We asked them now to try the link. They did give us information of where to send additional questions if they can't get on the Zoom link, but that was sent directly to them and we're waiting to see if they go. I know that when they RSVP to the meeting, they had told us 8:45 was the time that they were available to, so even if they had been on the meeting.
The contact tracing plan is, first of all, we have several people that have been trained district-wide and including myself to help with this, but we do have to work closely with the Department of Health to do that. So once there's a case, we inform the Department of Health and you guide us through that. Basically, contact tracing is going to be the responsibility of the Department of Health. We will assist them with our trained staff. Our staff members did a virtual training on the Johns Hopkins University website. That was basically the training for everybody who was doing contact tracing. So basically, we're working with them and our people in-house will assist.
Dr. Forte, can you also explain to the parents where they can find the document that our school nurse put together summarizing the state guidelines?
On our website, on the COVID website, COVID page, there's a document that says "summary of Department of Health requirements." The reason why we did that is because that's Department of Health, of course, a document of 16 pages. So I asked our nurse to try to work on it to make it a little bit better. It's still four pages, but there's some information on the specific question that was just asked about contact tracing.
I'm going to read a question that's come in through our board member, Mrs. Gold, who's at home and joined the meeting virtually and says that this is something that you're not able to see right now. So the question is, can someone speak more about the cohorts and how those will work for Lakeview School?
Yes, I can speak to that. So cohort speaks to the group of students. So a second grade teacher, all of those students are in one cohort, so we're choosing to try and keep them isolated from other students. So they won't have specials in the morning, the specials will be virtually in the afternoon. So other than, other than leaving to go outside for a morning meeting or something like that, we're just going to stay with that one group. So that's the cohort. It's a group of students that are together with their teacher and it's sort of trying to keep them isolated from contact with other students. So you know exactly who's in the group and it's less exposure for them to other students.
Thank you, Mrs. Costanza. Do you have one?
I would just like to answer some of the technical questions that are coming up and the laptop that is providing your hearing from the speakers is right below the speakers as the sound comes out. So I can't move it any closer to the speaker, but if our, if the people speaking could speak up a little bit, maybe that would help the people online to hear a little bit better. Okay, so for the next question. We have Lyle Beck, Gardner Road. Will the district move classes or specific students to virtual learning if exposed to COVID? Or will it be a school district-wide decision? Basically, what is the plan to quarantine cases when discovered?
Again, this will be something that will be guided by the Department of Health. When you have a case, each one will be discussed individually and similarly made from there as to whether or not we can switch kids to all virtual. We, in some cases, could do that quickly, in some cases, it might take a little bit of time, and also the paths of how we're switching to virtual so quickly. So we also have, we also provide, we are providing seven emergency closing days this year, and we could make it more if we needed to by adding more days in June. So if it came up, we could possibly use a emergency closing day if there was not a way to move everybody virtual.
And Mrs. Wagner, I can just follow up. I believe that the state has some, put out some pretty, a little bit more specific, I shouldn't say pretty specific, a little bit more specific details of exactly how many cases, what the flow would be. It is certainly not dictated by anyone on the board or in the district, but would be dictated by both the State Department of Health as well as the Township Department of Health. But they did give some, some more guidelines on how many, what the contact tracing would look like. So that information, like Dr. Forte said, can be found via the COVID page on our website.
Yes, and I believe, I can't pull it up right now, but I believe that the document that our school nurse summarized, the state 15-page document, is available and answers some of those questions or outlines the protocol that the state has put forth. And then I believe on our website, you can also access the 15-page document from the state. All right?
Yes, the full 16-page document is on the website as well, and it's also linked to the summary. You'll want to see it.
So some of those questions are very specific and we were looking for additional guidance during our last meeting. The state has since put forth more information and like Mr. Anderson said, it is not going to answer every question, but it gives you the guidelines of who would be notified and the contact tracing and things of that nature.
Yeah, I was able to just pull it up, Mrs. Wagner. So it lists out scenarios of one confirmed case in the school, two or more confirmed in the same classroom, two or more cases within 14 days. So there are some specific scenarios, probably like Mrs. Wagner said, not every scenario that we could ever come up with, but there are some pretty specific scenarios and what the process would be as far as closing schools or contact tracing for certain students and staff members.
And those will change based on what our numbers are in the area of the state right now. So right now, we're at a level green, probably has a name I'm not familiar with, but the protocol goes through that as well. And yes, it is the lowest. I think the important thing to note here is that the district does not decide alone when to close a building. Is that right, Dr. Forte?
Yes, that is, that is accurate. People who have the rights to close the buildings would be the superintendent, if it felt like the meeting was an emergency day, the health department, but the only ones who can grant me the ability to go fully virtual would be the Department of Education. There have been some guidelines on that. For example, if there was a need to go fully virtual, it would have to be during a state of emergency and would have to be after two days. Next question is from Andy Vowell Maisel from 25 Longview Trail. At Lakeview, will the classroom teachers for each grade, the previous classroom teachers, or in order to reduce class size, would it be, let's say, a special teacher, like PE or something like that, teaching math and literacy?
Can you say, can you repeat that question, please?
The question is, will the, will the classroom teachers or teaching in-person be teachers that have experience teaching, teaching different grade levels or would it be a specials teacher like physical education, be teaching math and literacy?
We do not have any physical education teachers teaching math at Lakeview School for the upcoming school year. Any teacher that's teaching a grade level is a certified teacher who has experience and background in teaching academics.
Next question from Zach Zucker. At Valley View, I understand that the entry and exit, the school will be staggered by how crowded the hallways. Did we already address that? Would you just, you know, real quick, Mr. Foreman?
So we'll, again, stagger dismissal time from class to try and keep the number of students in the hallway reduced at all times.
Next question is about the masks and the recent Duke University study from Amy. Recent Duke University study says that some of the masks, like gaiters, are proven to actually spread the virus or the rules are placed to ensure effective mask reviews. The answer to that question is, we are following the guidelines of the Department of Education and Department of Health. The samples of masks, pictures of masks that are acceptable are posted in the summary page, is also found on the website and has been disseminated. The district is allowing people to wear pretty much all different types of masks. The only one that we are asking people not to wear are the ones with vents in it because that did come from the Department of Health. Also, we asked this one, we asked a question about testing, that we are not testing every child.
So Dr. Forte, can I just interrupt the questions for a moment and say that I think board members have fielded a number of questions that have addressed a specific study here or a specific article here. And I hope that people understand that the guidelines, that the district does not have a choice of which guidelines we follow. We must follow the health and safety guidelines that are given to us by the New Jersey Department of Education as well as the New Jersey Department of Health. So even if what is being said in that study has scientifically been proven to be true, until the Department of Health sends down those guidelines to the districts, those are the only ones that we can follow.
We're down to our last few questions. We're down to the last four minutes to allow our administrators to time to downtime. This has been hectic time for all of us, and we did put a one-hour limit on it, so we're down to the last few questions. This is a quick question about how will people be able to pick up their devices that they asked for? Two people asking the same question with Mrs. Costanza or one of the principals asked a question from all three schools.
So at Valley View, communication will be coming out in the next day or two about sixth graders being able to pick up their devices. Our current seventh and eighth graders already have theirs. Any new students to the district will also get separate communication and we will set up a time next week for them to come to pick up theirs.
We do have a device for every student. Can we hear from Lakeview and Riverview?
For the elementary schools, we're working together. We are looking to see if we can pass it the same day that we've passed the materials out on September 1st and 3rd. As soon as we can confirm that we do have a strong and accurate count of who needs the devices that will be learning virtually, but our goal is to have it on those two dates, September 1st and September 3rd, the same days that are coming for the other materials.
From Lakeview, do you, Lakeview, do you have a maximum number of kids that will be virtual? No, there is no maximum number for those classrooms. Next question, if the district ends up going all virtual, would those virtual students be shared between Lakeview and Lakeview, these classes? Or will they be split into classes based on their home schools? I don't, we didn't get to that yet. If there's something quick that we can answer, but that's something down the road from that.
We did discuss this with the principals today. It really depends on what we're looking at. If it's like a two-week quarantine, we, it's unlikely we would put them to another virtual class and then bring them back to their original. If we close down for the school year, then we may be looking at that because it's only the second and fifth grade who aren't already in, that are in a joint cohort between the two schools. So it really depends on how long.
Next question, how will social distancing requirements be managed relative to safety drills? We are waiting for guidance from the state on that. They did say that drills need to be conducted from lockdowns. We don't really see that as an issue. More for fire drill, more information to follow on that. Next question from Lisa Travers, Valley View. Virus is spread easily through vents or have the filters being installed. We touched on the filters before. Pappa filters are used in some areas, but again, the filters that are placed on our equipment will be the ones that are recommended by the vendor. And our, our filters on the youth doc units will be what's called Merivir. There's, there's pappa filters in a couple locations and air purifiers, not in our ventilation systems. I'm going to close the questions in the chat, and there's one person that came up to ask me a question. If the questions are related to administrators that are not here. Okay, so we are going to ask that our administrative team, they are free to hang up. Thank you for doing, you know, for putting your time and answering the questions. We will put out the answers to the questions that were in the survey again in writing to everybody, so that they have in case they weren't able to hear it. Again, thank you administrative team for hopping on the call and being there for the call. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate, Dr. Forte's thanks to all of you for hopping on the call tonight and giving us even more time than you already have, so it is much appreciated. Before we get to the question in the room, Mrs. Costanza, can you just say if there were a number of questions still remaining? No, Mr. Forte read all the questions. Okay, so it seems like we've addressed all the questions that were in the chat.
I'm sorry, that's not, that's not true. We addressed all the questions from anybody who asked one question. We skipped over people who asked all the questions. We'll attempt to get those questions answered and add it to that other document. Mrs. Costanza wouldn't mind creating a doc with those questions, we will add them.
Absolutely, I just want to remind everybody as well that both the Zoom session and the Google Meet session are being recorded and will be available probably later in the day tomorrow to be reviewed. Great, thank you. Okay, sorry to make you wait.
No, no problem. Jennifer Bellagino, I'm a teacher at Valley View and I also am a resident at One Ivy Press Lane. I just wanted to clarify, I came here today to sort of represent a whole bunch of teachers that had questions. I just wanted to make clear that we sent those questions and we got a response, so I was just waiting to make sure. Most of them were pretty much answered anyway in the conversation.
Yeah.
Sorry. Most of them were answered in some runaway way in the general public comments, which is what I waited, but I just wanted to let the teachers know that I was informed that we would be notified of the rest of them at some point. Would that be in writing, will you turn that to us?
Yeah, so thank you. I was going to, when we were all finished, yes, so there were a number of questions that were submitted to board as well as Dr. Forte and Mr. Foreman. And as Mrs. Bellagino said, a number of them were answered tonight during the question and answer period, but it seems that there's still possibly some unanswered questions among the staff. So Dr. Forte and Mr. Foreman are going to work on addressing those questions and they'll put out something this week in writing to address those questions and it'll go to all the staff so that everyone is on the same page.
The one thing that I just wanted to point out there The one thing that I just wanted to find out there, Governor Murphy came out with a 40 point checklist most recently. Is that what, are we using that column? Is that what we should be referring to? Or it seemed like it was kind of trimmed down more readable.
There's so many checklists and documents. We have to see what we're talking about before I can answer that. Because like I said, things are changing every day, whether or not it's a document or a letter or not, I can't answer that.
So that, I guess that was the most recent update that he made when he, when he did the virtual, accepted the virtual as being an option. And just for example, one of the things that came up, which I found kind of odd is that there were designated, that had to be designated hand washing times for students. And the only reason I bring it up is because I noticed that it did come out of a high school document. So, and that was brought up with the washing of the desks at Valley View.
So a little thing like that. Why don't we add that question into the?
Sure. Oh, it is. That's why.
So.
They're all relevant. I just wanted to see what we can do.
Thank you very much. So just to review, we have answered. We have answered questions in the room, questions that have come in through the chat. Every person who asked a question was allowed, allowed to ask at least one question. If they were not answered tonight, they will be, the district will be putting out written information to summarize all answers and questions that were asked tonight. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the rest of the meeting, which is.
This is why, yes, sorry, this is not a COVID question, but it is an answer to this issue. And you will get a chance to connect and I can see which information you're looking at. I just wanted to make sure the public realizes they did update the standards and regime of 2020 for the health standards. However, it did give you some time to update your curriculum in your school district with that. The one, the standards are pretty general, so they do not, the standards do not give any specific content to teach. So the only standard for a grade is social and sexual health is there are factors that contribute to making healthy decisions about sex. So it does not require school districts to teach any specific content. So I can certainly give you our texts and our materials so you can see what content we deliver that meets that particular standard.
I have six years, especially against the eighth grade, so yeah.
There's nothing, and I can tell you it's even less in the other grades. It's conflicts between people occur and there are effective ways to resolve them. Certainly it's not, it's up to the eighth grade, that's as much as we can.
I'm just gonna have a question. There were questions that came in about teacher certifications. And you know, there's been discussion about, you know, teachers who have never taught the subject before going into subjects. Can you review what the requirements are for teachers and?
Well, all teachers have to have, if they're in elementary school, they would have to have a K five certification, which means they've done student teaching in the subject areas. All of the teachers that we are using in both the virtual classrooms and our in-person classrooms have all taught general education, special education, if that's an appropriate setting for them. But it is not, it is not a content specific degree. So if someone had a K to 12 art degree and it was all, and they're usually teaching middle school, they would not be teaching our first grade language arts. So all of our teachers are familiar with the core rhythm.
I think you addressed the main concerns of our parents. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Forte.
I hope it's not, so maybe T G.
Dr. Forte, superintendent's comments?
So just a quick comment. Everybody's working really hard. Everybody's ready to get this, the places back up and running. We know that there's a lot of challenges. We know that there's been a lot of things that are, have to be fluid and change. We, we really feel strongly about getting the kids back at school and at the same time allowing parents the option to not send their kids back into the full virtual. We also committed, we are also committed to provide a strong virtual program for our students as well. We're all in this together. It's a community effort for everybody. And we are looking forward to seeing our students back in the buildings on September eight.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Dr. Coles, Assistant Superintendent's comments?
I have one amazing comment. So those of you that may have seen an article that came out today with the New Jersey school rankings. They rank the 2,088 schools that exist, public schools that exist in New Jersey, which include charter schools. And I want to congratulate Riverdale School who came in seventh in the state. So it's amazing accomplishment. They give you a score of up to 100 and we got 99.76 points, which put them at the point three, top point three percent of the state. So higher than 99.66% of the other schools.
That's amazing. And can you just say the, the ranking?
It's from the New Jersey's, based on probably test scores and, on the New Jersey test scores. But I can give the article.
Thank you. Mrs. Kramp, what is this administrative comments?
One, one comment. Just a reminder that the New Jersey school board have virtual workshops available. And if anybody would like to sign up, please can help me. Someone's, someone's possibly get. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what Dr. Forte had said that the administrative team has been working so hard and doing an excellent job trying to get everything ready for the buildings and doing what they think is the absolute, providing the best education possible for the students at Denble. I think that the administrative team and the board has tried to be as transparent and offer information to the parents and staff as much as we possibly can. So we're always open to suggestions. If you feel that there are other ways that we can communicate information, we're open to that, but know that we are trying our very best to answer all your questions and concerns. Okay, so now we are opening to public discussion. There's our next agenda item and it is 9:09 PM. So we're going to open for public discussion. I know we just had a large Q and A that we don't usually, so this is part of our agenda. If anybody has any comments or questions, they're, feel free to, can they type in the chat? On the Zoom chat, yes, they can. So if you're joining us virtually, you can type in the Zoom chat. If you're here in person, please come up. And we just ask that for regulations, you provide your name and address. We're just gonna wait one minute and then. Still questions?
I have one quick one.
Oh, sure, come on.
That's, that's my heard guy, 24 St. Mary's. Are we planning any school trips towards the end of the year? Like fifth grade class trips or some ways towards the end. I know at the beginning it's going on, but what are the plans as far as extracurricular trips and activities?
As of now, once again, August 24th, all extracurricular on hold. What we've been saying is we'd like to revisit it once the school year gets underway. If there's, if, if it's okay to do, we, we move on it. But for right now, everything, including trips are on hold. One of the problems with athletics, say, the middle school is all the other schools are not doing athletics. So if we wanted to do it, it would be difficult to get a schedule. So for right now, again, everything's on hold, but we are sensitive to that. If, if things change with the virus, you know, everything's okay to open up fully, then yeah, we would look at that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else coming? Okay, so it's 9:12 and we are going to close the public section and move on to new business. First item up is personnel. Mr. Anderson, would you move us through personnel, please?
Sure. There are no objections. I'd like to move under personnel, items one through eight, paying attention to the addendum that adds items one M through P as well as item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Questions or comments?
I would like to note that we have several new hires, so welcome them to the district as well as one retirement. Fran McCarty, is that correct? And then finally, I would like to point out for the public, item number seven is the memorandum of agreement with the Denble Administration Association for the time period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. So this is hopefully the first step of culmination of negotiations with that collective bargaining unit.
So I just wanted to say. So I just wanted to say we negotiated the TA agreement in the middle of a pandemic with everything else going on. They were tremendously responsive and it was a relatively quick and easy negotiation. And I give them all the credit for reporting with us to get this done. So I just want to say thank you to all the administrators.
Okay, if there are any other questions, roll call please. Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Kaz?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner? Yes, and I just want to note for record that Mrs. Gould did text me early on into the meeting and she wasn't able to respond, but she has been here the whole time. So now we are going to call on her to move us through instruction and programming, please, Mrs. Gould.
If there are no objections, I move, I have item one to be approved. It is the attached list of field trip requests. And I'd like to point out that at this time, the only two items in the field trip list are the two kindergarten orientation where they take the bus around the neighborhood of the school so that kindergarten students learn safety procedures to get on and off the bus.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please. Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Kaz?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner? Yes. Moving on to policy revisions. Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through policy revisions?
Sure, I'd be happy to. If there are no objections, I motion, I move that we go for, under policy revisions, approve the, number one, the second reading and adoption of the policies listed on the agenda, which includes a restart and recovery plan, acceptance, acceptable use of computer networks and computers and resources as well as the use of copyrighted materials. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please. Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Kaz?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner? Yes. That brings us up to finance. Mr. Kim, would you do the others again?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Again, I'd like to move under finance, numbers one through three found on the agenda as well as number four found on the addendum, which includes the approval of the sunbelt staffing to provide temporary personnel as well as the donation from American Image for COVID related school signs in the amount of $608, as well as the approval of the non-resident teacher tuition agreement of the amount of $2,000 for this current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Questions, comments?
Just a quick clarification, the donation from American Signs in addition to the one created from the previous agenda, right?
Yes, that's, that's another donation from Mr. Prision.
Thank you, Mr. Prision, for your generous donation again to the district.
Before we vote, I also wanted to include that we had a finance and ops committee meeting prior to the board meeting. And for the public, I did want to also mention that there was another $260,000 of COVID related purchases made to further protect the school.
Mr. Kim, the total cost up to date is $200,000.
Forgive me, it's not in addition, but the total cost is $260,000. That includes additional purchases that we're still waiting on, but due to supply issues. But we are continuing to try to find ways to make the school safer. So additional sprayers and dividers for buses and a number of different items that weren't originally purchased during the summer, but thought of afterwards. So we're continuing to try to provide a safe environment for all the students and the staff as well as any additional purchases that we need to reach our targets.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Roll call please. Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Kaz?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Gould?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner? Yes. Okay, now we are on to good other clause, committee reports, correspondence, discussion items.
Mrs. Wagner, if I may, as I mentioned during the last meeting, I, I wanted to echo my thanks for the administration, all the staff members, all the teachers who will be on the front lines essentially for their commitment to getting the school open. I know that the public, me personally, as a parent, some of the mandates or the guidelines that the state provides may not be as, as comprehensive or as strong as I personally may want as a pharmacist myself. I understand that, you know, that study based programs and other results from studies can, you know, further help us as a district to move on. But I do understand also that as a district, we have to open against the fine with the state. So sometimes if it's not, if I'm not happy with what the state is providing or in terms of guidelines, you know, then I have to, as a parent, ask myself, do I want to put my children in that situation? Do I want to put my family at risk? And I think the public or the community has to ask themselves that question. They may have to come to grips that the plan might not be what they would want. But at the same time, you know, what is best for the children, what is best for the teachers, what is best for the community? And so these are real questions that we individually as family members have to ask ourselves. Do we want to put our children in that environment if we're not comfortable? For the record, my wife and I have discussed it at length and we understand the risks. We also have the benefit of not having the family members, higher risk of family members at home as well. So, you know, we, we've, we've come to the decision that we do want to take that risk to introduce our children into that environment. We also believe. We also believe that they themselves could be solid community members or students where they would keep their masks on, they would be responsible and keep their masks on and do the right thing. So these are questions I strongly believe that we individually as families have to ask ourselves. What do we feel and what are we comfortable with? Do we want to put our families at risk and we want to be community as concerned? So, you know, and the other real question that our family asked ourselves is, will COVID possibly hit the schools? And, you know, while I don't want to say this as a board member, but as a, as a private citizen, I'm ready for that. If there is an outbreak in the school, you know, we have to deal with it and we, we don't want it, but there is a reality that we can't hide from. So that is something that we have a commentary group, so.
Thank you for sharing those, Mr. Kim. Anybody else have other comments?
Mrs. Wagner, if I may, I just wanted to let everybody know that the foundation of Denville has made the difficult decision to cancel the golf outing for this year. It was scheduled for late September. They will be looking to see if there's any other opportunities to have fundraisers to help out with some grants for this year, but at this point, they have decided to cancel the golf outing. Second comment, I did want to thank Mr. Kim for his comments and, and I feel very similar to you. It's a tough decision. I think that everyone in this community is faced with tough decisions, but I do think that the district is making every opportunity, every decision to try to keep the health and safety of the staff and the students in mind. I did want to make one comment because I've gotten a lot of questions as to what's going to happen with the opening of the schools. We have been fully and open and transparent. There's nothing being discussed in a private room somewhere or amongst a few board members or an administrator that has not been put out in public. There is nothing that we're hiding. There's no aha we're going to come out with in four days that says we're closing schools or not opening schools that we know of today at 9:24 PM on August 24th. I can give my personal opinion and people have asked me, well, is a school going to open? And my personal opinion is there's two reasons why the schools won't open. Number one is the government comes and tells us, don't open the schools. So that's, that's an easy one. The second one is that I'm just being completely transparent for the community is that if we don't have enough staff members to open the school, that's the reality of the decision. If we don't have enough staff members that are comfortable or safe or able to come and open our schools so that we can appropriately educate our students, we can't open the buildings. So that's my personal opinion. It's not something that, it's not a board comment or anything. I just think that those are the two biggest reasons, maybe not the only, but the two biggest reasons why we may on, you know, August 24th, where we may not open the buildings in a couple of weeks. So I, I hope and pray that we continue to be safe in the community and appreciate the tremendous amount of work that has gone on between this board, the administrators, the staff in the buildings. I do want to point out one group of staff members, our custodial staff, has been doing an unbelievable job this summer. In a normal year, trying to open a new building would be an enormous task. In a normal year, I can remember going into the buildings four days before the buildings opened and be like, oh my gosh, how is this building ever going to be ready? There's, you know, usually desks in the hallways, they're still buffing the floors. They are so prepared this year, they work so hard. So I appreciate what everybody's doing. I thank the public for their patience. We're not holding things back, we're just trying to get the right and correct information out and we will continue to try to improve that, get more information as we have it. Seven of us are open to questions, comments, anything you guys have from the public, but we appreciate everybody and thank the community for their support as we try to get the students back in schools.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, so it is time to open up for second public comment. It is 9:27, 9:27, sorry. So again, if anyone here would like to ask a question, if anyone online would like to ask a question, they can type it in the chat and Mrs. Costanza will read it for us. How many do we have on our meeting now?
About 20 people left.
So 20 now, we were on Zoom. There are 16 people on Zoom and about 16 people on Meet. There are currently no questions on Zoom. You guys have 9:27? Okay, so it's 9:28, we don't have any comments or questions from the room and we don't have any comments, it looks like, in either Google Meet or Zoom. So we are going to close public session comments at 9:28 and we don't have a need for an executive session now.
No, we do not. We adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Lur and Mr. Capello, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, too. Any extensions? We are closed. Thank you, everyone.